Good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Martinak. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. I'd like to call to order the Planning Board meeting for August 4th, 2020. I'm going to start with a few announcements here before we get going. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transition of the COVID-19 virus, the town of Northborough has been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Members of the public who wish to view the livestream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda, by tuning into Cable Access Television Government channel, Verizon Channel 30, or Charter Channel 192, or by visiting the town's website and going to the Department of Cable Access Television and clicking "What's Playing Live." If you're on the phone, please dial *9 to raise your hand. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is acquired by law. This meeting will not feature public comments. I'd like to now confirm that board members and persons anticipated on the agenda are remotely present and can be heard by stating the following. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. So let's see. Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Millie Milton?
Here.
Amy Peretzky?
Here.
And Michelle Gillespie?
Here.
Okay, great. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bob Federico?
Here.
Kathy Dubert?
Here.
And Fred Litchfield?
Here.
Okay, great. Just a few ground rules for conducting the meeting tonight. I will invite each speaker on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and speak clearly and in a way that helps to generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board or Committee will be conducted by a roll call vote. Okay, I think that covers just about everything. And to start, let's see, the first meeting, the first item on our agenda is the continued public hearing for 425 Whitney Street, special permit site plan approval and special permit per groundwater protection overlay district. So Kathy, is anyone attending from STARS that needs to be brought into the meeting?
Yes, you have under Myrick O'Connell is Steve Madouse, their attorney, and then Rich Whitehouse, their, one of their engineers. And technically, when we continue, when the Board continues a public hearing, you know, the applicant needs to agree to the continuance.
Okay, so let's see. Rich, did I bring you over? Yep, I have Rich. I have Stephen. Rich, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
There you go. Okay, great. Okay, thanks for joining us. There is no present business to conduct tonight for tonight's public hearing. I'd like to discuss continuing the hearing to a future date and time that we can agree upon that works for the applicant as well. Do you have any suggested dates that work for you, Steve or Rich? We meet on the, we have the next, the next one that we have is August, well, it probably wouldn't even make sense, Kathy, for August 18th. Is that the next one?
Correct. August 18th is your next meeting. And then, if you want to confirm with everybody, you know, your September schedule would be September 1st and September 15th. You know, so depending on, you know, you know, if you, if you finish and confirm everything tonight and then a contract would need to be signed by the town administrator. You know, I, in the RFQ, I had put a approximate date of, of starting the peer review on the 17th, August 17th, and that I believe it was a month for the work to take place. I'm just looking for my schedule. So, so you'd, you know, you'd be just shy, a couple days shy, yeah, August 17th. Oh, I'm sorry, the award date, August 17th. But if, if you end up doing it sooner, that's great. And then the estimated contract beginning on August 24th. So again, those are, you know, a little flexible. They were just approximate. So if you, if you look at, you know, possibly starting the week of August 17th or the consultant starting the week of August 24th, you know, you'd, you'd certainly be looking probably at an October, your first meeting in October.
Oh, okay, so we shouldn't plan to meet before we, the peer review starts? We don't meet until after that?
Well, if you, if you end up starting the peer review by the 17th of August, you know, I think there might be some, you know, information that could be shared with the Board. Again, I'm speaking for a consultant that you haven't hired yet, but looking at the calendar, you know, we, you might be able to, you know, have information for September 15th. Otherwise, I think it would be October 6th.
Okay, so would it make sense to continue for September 15th? Is that what you're suggesting, Kathy?
That, yeah, that's what I'm suggesting. I, I don't know where the applicant feels on that, but...
Okay, how about for you, for either Stephen or Rich? Do you have any thoughts on that, what your preferences are?
On my end, the earliest possible date would be, it's fine with me.
I agree, the sooner the better would be fine. As soon as we can get the peer reviewers started and get some report back and get a decision. Because September 17th will be one year from when we filed, so.
So if you, if you did it to the 15th, Carrie, and, and then for some reason, you know, we, there isn't, you know, sufficient information or there wasn't sufficient time, you could certainly then continue it. But, you know, so my suggestion would be the 15th. And then if we have to, you know, the Board could continue it till October 6th.
Okay. Okay, so if we were to say September 15th at 6:00 p.m., would that work for STARS?
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Okay. So is there a motion then to continue the hearing for 425 Whitney Street, special permit site plan approval and special permit per groundwater protection overlay district to September 15th at 6:00 p.m.?
So moved.
Okay, second, I'm going to give Anthony the motion and a second.
I'll second. Amy.
Okay, great. So I'm going to do a roll call vote for all in favor. Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie is an aye. Okay, motion carries. We will continue the hearing till September 15th, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. Okay, great. Thank you. I'm gonna move you back here. So Rich, I'm gonna, I think you're on an older version. Oh, there you go. Okay, perfect. Okay, next on our agenda, we have interview for 425 Whitney Street Peer Review. So for that, I'm going to invite Scott Miller to join us and Eli Port to join us. Scott, welcome. Is there another person on the line that you wanted to bring over?
Is Eli Port? Eli Port is here.
Yep, Eli Port.
Yep.
Yep, anybody else? Just this, oh, okay, great. There are a few more that look like they may belong to your group, so that's great. Okay, so thank you for sending a response. That was, that was great to see. The Board had a chance to look at it and we have some questions for this evening. Kathy, I don't know if you have a format that you suggest for conducting interviews? If it makes sense to have the, Steve, maybe talk a little bit about, give us the highlights or talk a little bit about it for us to start, and then, does that make sense?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Okay, so I'm sorry, is it Steve or Stephen do you go by?
Scott.
Oh, Scott, I'm sorry. Okay, well, there you go. You don't go by either one. Okay, Scott, if you want to give us a rundown and talk a little bit about your response and highlights, we'd be introduced, Eli or Eli, if you want to introduce yourself and talk a little bit more, that would be great.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate the, the time with your Board tonight. I'm Scott Miller. I'm with Haley and Ward Incorporated. We've been in, in the area of doing municipal engineering work for 121 years now. In, in February, we combined with CES Incorporated out of Maine to give us a little more depth and, and a broader reach for our work. Quite a bit of the work that we do, it's substantially municipal focused work, water supply, wastewater treatment. I also have been doing peer review work for, mostly for planning boards, DBAs, and some of our water and sewer clients and that type of thing. It's given me a fairly broad range of projects that I put into the proposal. Any of that work has ranged from residential work. A lot of it is in central Massachusetts. I live in the area, so I tend to get work in this area. Kind of nice to be able to drive home within a half an hour after, after a, a meeting. And, but it does range up to Marblehead and we've done some work on, we've been, Nantucket is a client that kind of the other reached down to the South for us. But for the most part, like I said, it's, the peer review work has been mostly in central Massachusetts. Put this in the proposal, the RFP response, and those are essentially projects that I've worked on over the last, since mid 1990s or so. And this one, your project was of interest to me. It, it showed up in the advertisements. I don't have, admit right off the bat that I don't have an awful lot of experience looking at the background information with, with x-ray radiation and protection of the, of the system that way. And was actually, to be honest, wasn't going to respond. The town planner had mentioned that Eli Port was also interested in the project and gave me his cellphone. That, that made a difference for me to have somebody that could bring in a lot more expertise than, it doesn't take much to be a lot more expertise than we do in, in this type of work. But, so I, I asked Eli to join in the response. And I guess with that, I'll introduce Eli Port and let him explain his background. Just before I jump out, I'm a registered professional engineer in Massachusetts and Connecticut at this point, but I've been doing work since, for Haley and Ward since, I think I was out of school, so quite a while. Eli, can you pick up from here and introduce yourself and explain your background that I don't, that I missed?
Can you hear Eli? Let's see. It doesn't look like you're muted.
Let's see. He does have his hand raised, so let me see if I can figure out what's going on.
Is he still in? Oh, I wonder if his phone line is still... Nope.
Carrie, I just, I just have his email. I just sent him an email. I have no idea if he's able to...
I don't know the best way to approach.
This is Scott. The best, you, best I can do is, is refer back to his resume. He's, he's worked in the, in the field for, I'm going to work off the top of my head, I think it's, it's a 30-year range in, in that area with radiation, radiation protection, industrial hygiene. I believe he's related with Northwestern University right now, but also doing work on the side as a, with RSSI. But it would be helpful to get, get his questions in here, or I know that that's your interest.
He has a phone number.
Let me, Carrie, I'll just try to call him. I have the, it's the company phone, so let me just hang on.
I've looked everywhere. I don't see an issue with him. It looks like he should be up. He's just, I'm not quite sure what the issue is.
Okay, well, I think we may have some questions specific to Mr. Port and some specific perhaps Scott could answer for us. So why don't we at least, it does make sense to get started on that portion and then we can hopefully work it out, any issues out? Would that, would that be the right approach for everybody, or?
Sure. Unfortunately, I think my three questions were specific to Mr. Port. I wonder if he signs out and signs back in?
I don't know.
Does he need an invitation?
He has, he has one.
Yeah, the problem is if I remove him, he can't come back in because that means like I kicked him out. So he can't come back in. So if someone can reach out to him and tell him to log out and log back in, or I could, I could demote him back and we could try that and see if that works.
Yeah. Have you talked to him, Scott Miller? I was just wondering if you've met with Eli on the phone or through Zoom and all?
I, I've talked to him a couple times early on when I responded to him to see if he was interested in proceeding with this work. And then we spent quite a bit of time then talking about the, the project, his background. And then most recently, I think it was Friday, I think I talked to him just to let him know the, the schedule here, that, and he was going to be in there. And I forwarded the, the link. So he, I guess what he's saying, if he, if he logged out, he can't get back in again?
No, if, if I kick him out, he can't get back in as the host. But he, I just, I just demoted him and we promoted him and it didn't make any difference.
Right.
Do you think it's...
Okay.
Mr. Miller mentioned he forwarded the link to Eli. Does Eli need his own link to get on? You know how we all need our own link?
No.
No, no, you guys need your link because you're, because you're panelists.
Okay.
I forwarded the, the agenda with the, with the link on it.
Okay.
But we talked briefly at that point, just the background, mostly, you know, what, what our background was, what Haley and Ward, CES, we were lacking, and discussed his background in, as I mentioned, in the radiation field and quite a bit of industrial hygiene and safety work that way for various companies and also for his private, his private consulting work.
Okay. All right, well, I think we have very specific questions from Mr. Port, so I don't think it makes sense for us to, I, I think maybe we want to continue this too next time so that we don't continue to waste time. I, I have a short timeframe available and I think we have attendees on the line here. So why don't we?
Carrie, I just talked to Eli and he's, he can hear all of us, but he is muted. And, and he said not on his end.
He's not muted in our end.
He's not.
Try Alt-A. Sometimes my computer says do Alt-A and that takes you off mute. Can he try that?
Okay.
I don't know. Right.
All right, why don't, why don't we continue for next time? I don't know, this isn't really a hearing, so I don't know if we have to continue it necessarily or just put him back on the agenda for next time, Kathy, so that we can have everybody on the line?
Yep.
If he steps out, I can try and get him back in as a panelist, if you'd like me to try that, my chair.
All right, well, it's just that I'm short on time and I really don't want to rush this. So we're already kind of heading to 6:30, so why don't we try for next time and hopefully resolve any problems? I don't know, maybe we can do a test run with Zoom or something?
What, what was the date of the next meeting?
The...
The 18th.
The 18th, yeah, August 18th.
August 18th?
Yep.
Does that work for you, Scott?
Yeah. As far as I can tell, I'm not going anywhere. 6:05?
I know. We do have a couple of hearings that night.
Do you, do you want to start earlier that night and do the interviews first? Start at, say, I don't know, 5:00 or 5:30?
Um, let's see. Can we decide, do we, if we're not continuing this, can we decide outside of this meeting? I just don't have my normal calendar with me to... We don't have to pick a date or time if we're not continuing a hearing. We're just putting them back on the agenda?
Right. Yeah, correct. It's not a public hearing.
So is it possible, okay. Yeah, I would just want to check my normal calendar. I just don't have everything with me today.
Yeah, you, I mean, you do, you know, that night, you do have, you do have other things, you know, the, that you continued to the, to 6 o'clock that night. Let's see, what did you continue?
Kathy, you're looking that up. It looks like Eli has a mic up now. I don't know if he can speak. Can you hear us, Eli?
Can you hear us? No. Okay, so why don't we just, we'll decide on it outside of the, if, if the, if the 18th works for you, that's great. The next option is September 1st. So why don't, outside of this meeting, we'll work on one option or the other and figure out something that works for everybody. Because of course, we need to hear from Mr. Port as well, what works for him. So it doesn't make sense to decide a date if we don't know his availability. So why don't we go for that?
Thank you.
Scott, can you hear me?
Yes, sorry, my power went out here, so I'm kind of working through this.
Oh, I know. It's such a crazy night for everybody. Maybe Mr. Port's having trouble too.
If you have questions or anything, if you want to get those to us ahead of time, we can take a look at them and just go through so it moves a little smoother to at the, at the meeting, if that helps. Thank you.
Okay, that sounds like a great idea. All right. So thank you for coming and we look forward to next time.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so then in that case, we just have the consideration of minutes and a 400 Cedar Hill Street decision.
Yeah, actually, I don't have that, Carrie. So you'll have that prior to your next meeting.
Okay, got it. Okay, so let's see, we have the minutes from July 7th and July 21st. I am not caught up with either one, but if everyone else on the Board read the minutes and wants to proceed, that's fine with me. Has everyone else read the minutes?
I did.
Millie, you're muted.
I did.
Millie?
Yeah, I did, but we also had the 16th, July 16th, which we passed over last time.
Oh, yep. Okay, great. Thanks, Millie. So for the, for the minutes from the 16th, are there any amendments for those minutes?
I did. I, I had some.
Sure.
Do you want to start, Millie, or do you want me?
Um, you probably caught the, some of the same ones I caught, so why don't you go ahead?
Um, on the 16th, actually, the first word was TH, it's a B, in the first paragraph under 400 Cedar Hill Street, unless my computer deleted it. I just have a TH where it says the site plan was reviewed.
Okay.
And then for the third sentence, it starts on the second. This has to do with the soccer in 400 Cedar Hill. It said, "The applicant identified the educational use element, a nonprofit educational corporation. It meets that level." And I think we have to say, in their opinion, it meets that level. I mean, the rest of the meeting, we were trying to prove if it met that level or not. So it was in the applicant's opinion that it met that level, but when you read the sentence, it sounds like we're saying it meets the level of a Dover amendment. So we just change that sentence to say, in their opinion, they met that level?
Yeah.
And I have all these typed up, so I can send them to Kathy. I sent them out and I can send them to Kathy and Melanie because they're confusing.
Are those the only two?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, go ahead.
The next sentence where it says, "The educational activity is to be used for a primary or dominant purpose to make it applicable, applicable for the Dover amendment." I added, "to make it applicable for the Dover amendment." So that's just on the first page. These are the minutes I had the most changes. The 7th, I didn't have any. Um, so then, I go down further on the page, on the second page. Let's see. There was a sentence that didn't make sense to me. It's kind of in the middle.
Yeah, are you thinking of the one, it's eight lines up from the large paragraph where Mr. Federico said, "At the blank of the application." So if you go eight lines up from the second, the main paragraph, starts with the word committee. "Mr. Federico said, 'At the,' question mark, of the application." I thought it would be "time of the application."
Yes, I have that one too, and I think I wrote "time" too.
You see that? At the time of the application, the Board was working on the zoning amendment.
Yep.
Okay.
I had a couple...
Do you have additional ones?
I do.
Sure.
The very last sentence in that paragraph, I wrote, "Ms. Peretzky, although Ms. Peretzky likes soccer and is, it's a good use in the location, is concerned about setting a precedence because it could go in any precedent by using the Dover amendment because it could go in any zoning location, semicolon, including residential." So that was kind of a long sentence. And then...
So what is your edit? Are you breaking up the sentence? Is that your edit?
I'm adding words to it. And I typed them up and I sent them out to Kathy last night, but in, and in July. But I can send them out to everybody.
I mean, wouldn't the easiest thing, Amy, I've no, I know you've sent me edits in the past.
Yep.
But I think that how all the other Boards do it is they, is they... Um, but I think that how all the other boards do it is they, is they edit at the meeting.
Yeah.
Because I don't do any editing. So, so what, what sentence do you want to add there? And I mean, just so that we can finish this tonight.
I know. It used to be easier because when we met in person, we could hand it out to everybody and they could read along.
So what, what do you want that sentence to say?
Although Ms. Peretzky likes soccer and it's a good use in that location. Um, I chopped up when I wrote it. She's concerned about setting a precedent by using the Dover amendment because it could go in any location, semicolon, including residential. During the meeting, that's what I was talking about with setting precedent that it could go in anything, including residential.
Okay.
And then on the next page, the second paragraph on page four from the bottom. It says there is a requirement of 462 linear feet of diagram on both sides of the street. And I just didn't think that was the right word. Mr. Litchfield was talking about it. Mr. Litchfield said the easement and then goes, and then the second sentence said, there's a requirement of 462 linear feet of diagram. But I didn't think diagram made sense. I don't know what it is. Maybe Fred does.
I don't have my notes in front of me.
But the word there definitely does not make sense because you don't need 462 linear feet of diagrams on both, on both sides of the street.
Does that sound, um, like a mistake to you, Fred, or does that sound accurate?
The word diagram doesn't seem to make sense there.
Okay.
I think sometimes in the past, when we've had a lot of changes, um, I've sent it to Kathy and she sent it to everybody to review before the meeting. But this is the only one that I have changes.
Carrie, I think the word might be guardrail.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's on page four instead of diagram. I guess it should say guardrail.
Yeah.
And then I, that sounds like it would make sense. Cause I think you were talking about guardrails or easements or. On the next page, we were talking about the zoning amendments right before article 38. Um, it said Ms. Drew Bird gave a PowerPoint presentation. The following articles were reviewed, discussed and minor revisions were made. But this was right before town meeting. I mean, I don't think we made any revisions to any of the town meeting warrants. Like we weren't allowed to after February to change anything. I just thought in minor revisions made should come out because I don't know if you all agree, but this was in June before the July town meeting, and I don't think we were allowed to make any revisions to the zoning articles. Do you agree?
I'm just looking. I think, yeah, I think that night the only revision, they were, um, we made revisions to the purpose or the intent for the articles. I don't think we actually amended any articles. Did we? I don't think we did.
No, I don't think we're allowed to.
Um, maybe minor revisions were made to the presentation. Oh, Kathy, did you lose power?
We did. So I can't, I, I, I have to, I'm using my flashlight to read, but we're still, we're still on. Um, I think the, the only thing that I think that might have changed, and again, this is no big deal, is that when someone caught that I had still written, um, one vehicle and it was two vehicles.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, so I don't know if that was that meeting or not, but I mean, it, just take it out. I would say just.
So we lost Michelle, we lost Michelle and we lost Anthony. I don't know if a big, there's a big power outage that took, took them.
I would say yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The,
Okay.
The computers, the computers are on battery, but I don't know how long before we lose the wireless signal.
I wonder since there's so many changes with this, maybe I could just email it to Kathy and she could forward it to everybody and Millie's too. That way we can all just review them and vote on it for next time. Since we lost the other two, or do you want to keep going?
Well, are we that, are we almost done? If we just have a couple more, we may as well just get, uh, the three of us can still vote. All of us are at that meeting, right? Yeah. So we still have a quorum. We may as well. We're so far down.
Okay. So minor revisions were made. We'll just take that out.
Yep.
Okay. And then the next page, it talks about article 45. And, um, all I added was right bef, right under that paragraph about article 45, I added Ms. Jewett noted that a letter was received by resident Scott Rogers because then the next paragraph, it talks about Scott asking questions that relate to his letter. And I remember Kathy had said that she received a letter from him. I just thought it made sense to note that we received his letter before he asked his questions from the letter.
Well, because you wrote, we referenced Ask if number seven. So that wouldn't make sense without it.
Yep.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay. And his sentence didn't make sense and I made changes to that, but it's hard out. It said Ms. Martinique asked for public comment. Scott Rogers, 26 Tomahawk Drive. And then what does it say? Asked if number seven in article 42 was a complete exclusion? But he talked about a complete exclusion of vans on site. He mentioned some contractors such as painters meet on site in the morning to discuss the plans for the day. And he wanted to know if this would now be a violation. He wasn't clear on timing.
Yep. I remember that.
I just want to have what he said because the sentence I had said asked if number seven in article 42 was a completing exclusion, but it doesn't really say what he was asking.
Right.
And then it has Mr. Frederico's explanation. And then after Scott's question, I had Henry Squantes, because you were talking about the duplex waiver. And Henry actually called in, Henry Squante of Crescent Drive mentioned the reason the duplex waiver was here in the first place was it was added by the developers. The residents had voted at town meeting to increase the lot size of a two family from 100 to 150 feet and the waiver negated the vote of the residents. So Henry's.
So you're adding that.
I'm adding that because his state was, was left off.
Mm-hmm.
So I have that. And then I'm going down further. And for some reason, my Microsoft Word says page four for every page. So now I'm down to 222 West Main Street Common Driveway. And there's a paragraph that says Mr. Ziden said given, it's where it starts. And the paragraph under it says Ms. Martinique asked if there was public comment. So the middle of that paragraph, it says, it was a question, um, to Kathy. And she responded, the board does stop reviewing and issuing other permits for the property. And I think her answer was it, she, that they don't.
Not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't. So I was changing does to doesn't.
Yep.
Yep.
And then if I go all the way, I think that's it. That was my last one.
Okay. Millie, did you have additional? Edit?
Nope. I only had three. She got all three of them. I knew she would.
No.
Okay. So, um, for, for the purpose of Melanie writing, taking minutes, if you could please note at around 6:35 that Anthony Ziden and Michelle Gillespie lost, I, I think they lost power and parted the meeting so that we have that reflected in the minutes. And then, um, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the June 16 minutes as amended?
I make a motion to approve the June 16 minutes as amended?
Second.
Second. Okay. So all in favor, Millie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And Carrie is an aye. So these minutes are approved as amended. And then if we don't have the other board members, I don't think we have the ability to go over July. So if, why don't we push the July minutes till next time when we have everybody on the, oh, is that Anthony back? Anthony, can you hear us okay?
I can.
Welcome down.
Uh, did, did you read the minutes from July yet? Did you have a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Any of you did?
I did. Yeah. And I had no changes. So.
Okay. And Millie, did you as well?
Yep, I did.
Okay. So, uh, I'm, I'm okay voting on the minutes. If you are all prepared to vote, um, I can abstain because I did not have a chance to read them. So let's see, there are no changes to either sets of minutes?
Well, I, the quick one, but the seventh, I, I had no changes.
Okay. Any other changes for the seventh, Millie or Anthony?
No.
No.
Okay. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from July 7th?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from July 7th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Questions are made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. Um, I will do a roll call vote. Millie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony? Anthony? Okay. And Carrie?
Aye.
Will Steen. Okay. So three ayes from Millie, Amy, Anthony and Carrie Will Steen. And then we have the minutes from July 21st. Any amendments to July 21st minutes?
I had one. Page two, where it says Ms. Peretzky in the paragraph. The only change I had was in the first part, I said Ms. Peretzky wanted to make sure that the final layout had the entrance way to the intersection, oh, the entrance way closest to the intersection as a one-way driveway. It didn't make sense if it, if it didn't say closest to the intersection because we weren't changing the entrance way to the intersection. So it was the entrance way into the facility closest to the intersection as a one-way driveway. So I guess maybe that's where to state it. The entrance way closest to the facility or closest to the intersection, I meant to say. The entrance way of the facility closest to the intersection as a one-way driveway.
Yep.
And in that same paragraph, at the very end where it said, there will be no public access to the back of the building, there was actually no public access to the back of the parcel. We were talking about the back of the parcel where the, um, retention basin was, but there definitely had to be access to the back of the building. We talked about it in the next paragraph. So I guess what I just wanted to change in that paragraph where it says there will be no public access to the back of the parcel, not the back of the building. But you don't have to say not to the back of the building. Just change the word building to parcel. And that's all I had for that, those minutes.
Okay. Any other amendments for July 21st? Okay.
I did not have any.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Make a motion.
Okay. Second. Okay. So I'll do a roll call vote for all in favor. Millie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie Will Steen. Okay. So that catches us up with our minutes through July 21st. So that's great. And Kathy, you said no decision for Cedar Hill yet? Oh, you're muted.
Yep.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. So we have no further business this evening. If someone would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Wait, Carrie, just, just before you adjourn, just because I'm off next week, you know, I need to post by the end of this week. Um, so for August 18th, do you want me to just put the, and I know you don't have your calendar, but want to just keep the meeting at six? And, and we'll put the interviews on at six and then, and then go into the public hearing for Zero Bartlett? Does that work? Instead of, instead of going earlier? Okay.
When would you need to know by? Is there, well, I guess I'd miss you.
I have to post, um, yeah, I would have to post on, um, um, this Friday.
Okay. So if we can do earlier, do board members have the ability to meet earlier on the 18th?
I do.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So Kathy, is it better to go earlier and then change that if need be than it is to start later and worry about that?
Um, yeah, I, I mean, yeah, it would be easier to, to say post it for, you know, starting the meeting at five. You know, do the, do the interviews at five and then you would start your public hearings at six.
Okay. That sounds good. Do we need to check with, um, anyone who's hosting the meeting that night if they can do five as well?
Um, no, that's okay. Well, if, if one of the, there's one of two people that do it. So, um, one's on vacation. So the other one's stuck doing it.
All right.
Sorry, they don't have a choice.
All right. And I'll let you know as soon as I can. If that's a problem.
Okay.
But that sounds better than trying to jam everything at six o'clock.
Okay. So that was the only thing that I wanted to catch you on. That's.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Kathy, that we need to cover?
No, I don't. Thanks, Carrie.
Okay. Great. So then we have no further business posted on our agenda this evening. Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay. All in favor, Millie?
Aye.
Amy? Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Great. Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Night.
Good night.